Very good. So, like I said, you're the group. You're the chosen ones. We're going to be recording this just like we do and we'll get it out on the YouTube channel so that others can see and enjoy and be entertained. So I hope you find it entertaining. So like I said, we are going to go through several things. One, just kind of a current status of the hospital and then we'll talk about what we have upcoming. Dispel any myths, rumors, or any questions that you have, any concerns that you have, feel free to bring forward so that we can go ahead and get them answered. The other is you help additional groups as they come through. So if you ever really want to shape these town hall events and have a great impact on them, come to the 7:30 one and then give us tons of feedback and you will fundamentally change how we present all the information for the next groups. So the order that we're going to speak in today is going to be Kim Pridgen. She'll talk about, you know, kind of that financial centric aspects of the hospital. Then we'll turn it over to Angie and then I'll wrap around. Amber King has got some sick kids. Stay away from her unless you want strep and so she's unable to be here today. So, and we'll talk briefly about kind of the topics that she wanted us to bring to your attention. All right, so with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Kim.
Thank you. Did y'all hear how good the 7:30 meeting went? Nobody? Nobody went and told you a joke? What was that moaning for? That was a good joke. So I know y'all want to hear my joke. You know I have fifth grade humor. So how do you find Will Smith in the snow? You look for the fresh prince? Just for that, I'm going to tell you another one. What did the traffic lights say to the car? What did the traffic lights say to the car? Don't look at me, I'm changing. That was my f- I thought that was hilarious. Keep laughing, I'm going to tell you some more. Are you going to tell it or is it going to be ugly?
How do you make a tissue dance?
How?
Pull a little boogie on it.
That's good. So last time we talked, what were we talking about? Where were we? All the changes that we had done, how did we end up? Well, since then, we've ended up our year and how did our year end up? Because I know y'all are dying to hear that. Ended up really well, really well. We are very comfortable in our covenants. Couldn't say that for quite a while, but this year we ended with being right on target for our covenants, even have a little bit of cushion, which is even better to be. We're in the middle of our audit and the audit will complete in about mid-October and then we'll have a final numbers then, but there shouldn't be any change from what we've reported to the board. What did we do in July? We've only entered our fiscal year one month, much better than last July. Anybody know what a trend is? Is one month a trend? Is two months a trend? People, we have a trend now and guess what our trend is? Positive. So if we drew a line for our trend, which one would it be going? Up. We've been doing this since January. So everybody raise your right hand. Lean over right to the person beside you and pat them on the back. Tell them, "Good job." You know what my job is? Is report what you do. I don't do this. You do. I just report it. So you all have done a tremendous job. We couldn't have done it without you. You couldn't have done it without your team members. So thank you. Thank you for everything that you've done during this year. We've made tremendous strides. Now we have a trend. We are growing. We're moving in the right direction. So I liken it to the house that was built on sand. We're replacing it with rock every, every month. We're more and more stable. So thank you. Thank you, partner. Next year too. July, still continued growth. But I want to focus too on continuing to look at your resources. If you've been a new employee lately, you've heard this spiel and I didn't want y'all to miss that on it like my jokes, so I thought I'd share it with you too. Paper, which is probably the cheapest thing we use here. Paper, we all use it, right? So yesterday I printed off a report, about 25 pages. I didn't need it. So let's assume that paper cost a cent to print. How much did I waste yesterday? I wasted a quarter. If I did that every day, how much would I waste? I'd miss, I'd waste a dollar twenty-five. No big thing, right? What if I did that every day for the next year? Sixty-five dollars. Still no big thing. But what if every one of us did that? Every one of us? That's a person. We have just wasted a person's salary. Now, think of the most expensive thing you use in your department. Are you frugal with that? All of us, in everything we do, impact the resource utilization of this area. So even down to the paper, be mindful of what you're using. Now, I recycle my paper. I will admit that. Do the same with everything you do, please. So in light of all the good things, I get to share something good with you too, besides my jokes. I'll email them if you want me, you know, share those in your department later. Between now and Christmas, we're going to allow you to buy back PTO. You'll have a one-time buyback of 20 hours. You still have to leave 40 hours in your bank though and you'll still receive it at ninety cents on the dollar. So Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, if you need it. Do I need to repeat that? I'm only getting half smiles here. I thought I'd get a little more. I'm going to tell a joke. So one-time buyout between now and the last pay period, 20 hours is your max. You have to leave 40 hours in your bank. Form's online and we'll send out more specific instructions if you forget between now and then. So thank you for all that you've done because we're able to do this. We're going to look back at that PTO buyback policy at the first of the year as we continue to show improvement. You know, we want to get back to where we were, but we want to do it smart, thoughtful, and using our resources wisely. We plan on getting back there. So when we do, we'll look at that PTO buyback policy at the first of the year. Any questions? Not a one? Shouldn't blame it somebody. All right, I'll turn it over to Ms. Spear.
That was funny, wasn't it? Okay. So, I want to talk to you about the emergency room physicians. A couple of months, they came to us and said that they wanted to select a group to manage them and we offered to help them out. Their group now is called TIMA. So we sat down with them, went over what they were looking for in a group. We went out and found three different groups for them to go, for them to come in and do an interview process. We sat down, we as, meaning administration, sat down with the physicians in the room and the group, individually groups, in the room and went over with them what we were looking for in groups, interviewed them, let the physicians do a selection process based upon some objective criteria. Then they selected which group that they wanted to go with. The people that came in from these different companies, they were amazed. They have never been in a selection process where administration and the physicians all sat down in one room. It was completely transparent and went through the selection process together. But we were all, we all had the same interest. We all wanted to meet the needs of the community. We all wanted to be transparent and we all wanted to stick to the goals and the vision and the mission of the hospital. So they selected a group called CEP. We're finishing up the contract with CEP. They currently do not have any hospitals in the state of Tennessee, so they won't end the state really bad. So they're going to come in, they're going to do a bang, I mean a knockout job. They've already got some doctors that want to relocate here. They're in contract negotiations individually with the physicians currently here in the emergency department, okay? Now, we know Dr. Strange's leaving. He chose to go to a different hospital for family reasons, to be closer to his family, shorter drive distance. We all can appreciate that, right? And they'll be bringing in, like I said, a couple more doctors that we'll interview because they need a few, to add a few more doctors. And they'll be interviewing the current doctors that we have. Hopefully those doctors will, they will work out a contract with those doctors and we'll retain those doctors, okay? We will let you know when that transition will take place and how we will transition from that company, the company TIMA, to the company CEP, okay? Do y'all have any questions or concerns about that? Okay. The other thing I'm going to tell you is September is peripheral artery disease month. So in honor or to recognize peripheral artery disease, what the, naturally what everyone is doing is painting their toenails purple when they get their pedicure. So I have not had mine done yet, so don't look, don't look, okay? Don't look. But when you all, well you ladies and maybe some of you men, go get your pedicures, get your toenails painted, we're going to get Rob and Amber, whoever, to get it on, get it on our Facebook thing. Get a picture of your toenails, of your pedicure, of your purple pedicure and post it and we'll do a drawing of all the entries for a, for a gift card of something. So let's get your purple toenails in honor of peripheral artery disease awareness, okay? So show your purples. Okay? Do y'all have any que- Vicki, go purple.
With the large dots.
Oh, there you go. So, any questions? All right, I must be good, nobody had questions.
Once again, y'all are looking, you're like, "Ah, he's getting comfortable with that thing." Therefore, we got a little time. So, thank y'all for the updates. Again, if there's no questions, I do think they did a great job of covering those topics. If you think of something at the end, feel free to, to go ahead and ask. So, a couple of very quick announcements. One, just to tag on to the ED selection process that Angie talked about. I've mentioned to this group before, the difference between a repetitive process and an iterative process. Anybody remember the difference? Repetitive, you just do it over and over and over again. It's just a tire, right? It's just turning. Iterative, you do it over and over and over again, but you get better every single time. We cannot have an iterative process if we consistently change out the parts. So, this physician group is a good group, high-quality group. They help us through our core measures, they help us with our patient satisfaction scores. In fact, they're running, what, 99th percentile patients, or at least in the top 90th percentile patient satisfaction scores. It's a good group. They just need some help from a management standpoint because what they all have decided is, it's really fun to be a doctor, it really stinks to be a business person. So I would say I would not be a good doctor. I like being a business person. Everybody kind of has their own niche and so they've been able to come to the table, open transparent, honest conversation with us and said, "Look, we just want to get a management company to come in here, let's get this thing on the right track." And so that's what we're doing there. So we really support that. We're trying to work with them to keep as many of those physicians here as possible. We don't want to start changing them out and, you know, we like what we have. So, that's the idea behind that. Another announcement that I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention, if you did not know, there was a chief of staff election last month, which set the chief of staff going forward for the next two years. That was a contested election. It's actually the first time that that has occurred in, to anyone's recollection and it was a runoff between Dr. Krunk, who was the, had been the chief of staff for the last two years, and then Dr. Sanders. Dr. Sanders did win that election and is moving forward. Actually began September 1st as the new chief of staff. So, just wanted to bring that to you all's attention. Now then, Dr. Krunk, for the last two years, has done two things. One is he has served as the chief of staff. The other is that he has helped us with this Vanderbilt Health Affiliate Network, the Vanderbilt affiliation. You had to have a physician representative. So, I sit on the board, well, he sits on the board for that as well. And so you have to have a physician representative that sits with the CEO on that board because it is a clinically-driven, quality-motivated board. So you better have a physician sitting beside you so you can talk about patient care and how to do great things. The other is, we participate with Tennessee Hospital Association in just about everything. I think if you're not on a THA committee, throw up your hand because I'll get you on one. And he is our physician representative to that as well. Additionally, during that two-year period of time where he was the chief of staff, RAC audits came along. So, we all know about sequestration, right? Because we felt the impact of sequestration last October with the changes that we had to make. Well, part of all of this healthcare reform were the RAC audits, where they were essentially looking at the billing practices of hospitals and putting auditors in and making sure that billing had occurred appropriately. So, he is our physician advisor, physician champion for those efforts and so that's a third role that he takes. So, we are working with him to determine exactly what his role will be going forward if he wants to continue doing that or if he wants to just use this as a time of transition or whatever. So, if you hear anything about it, that's what's going on. We would like Dr. Krunk to remain the representative with THA, V-hand in our physician advisor, but again, people have life decisions and life choices they have to make, so we'll, we'll support everybody as they go through those, okay? All right. If anyone has any touch with any patients from the outpatient standpoint, and that's both a physician services corporation and that is within our outpatient departments, I think you might think that we are very, very busy. And I think you are correct that for this time of year, in the summer, we are incredibly busy in the physician offices and in our outpatient areas. Booming. To the point of where we're kind of looking at it going, "Hey, sick season hasn't hit yet," right? I've got kids, just started school, they're starting to come back in with their summer colds. We're very excited. The grandparents are going to be coming in. Yeah, and so I'm starting to get a little, you know, nasally. And this weekend, we're going to go see their grandparents. And in fact, they saw one set of their grandparents last weekend, they're going to see another set this weekend. I guarantee this last weekend, they got to see my dad. I promise you that by this weekend, he's going to be calling me and yelling at me for letting my kids get him sick. That's how it happens, right? We start getting the summer colds, things start feeding in and before you know it, we're rolling into flu season, pneumonia season, and all the different things that happen. Plus they fired up the barn, so anybody with CHF, COPD, all these other things, right? Allergies just in general, yes. So the good post-nasal drip, waking up every morning with a sore throat, it's great, right? So we're already booming, we're kind of breaking the trend from an outpatient volume standpoint in physician offices and now we're starting to see these things roll in. So, it's going to be a lot of fun, making sure that we have access, meaning that all these patients can get in, get their appointments made. But, on the, on the physician services side of the house, they have all achieved, the primary care physicians have achieved a level-three certification with a quality group and you may have seen the article in the paper about that. And that is, one of the criteria for that is, is access. Making sure that patients can get in to see a provider and either a nurse practitioner or a doctor. And so we are at the highest level of that. So, we're, we're working really hard on that access, making sure that we've got that. Now then, every single one of those patients that comes into the doctors because we're making sure they have access, has to come in here and get labs done, medical imaging work up, and then it translates into outpatient surgeries and all these other kind of things. So, there's a lot of stuff going on. So if you're in the outpatient world, you're hustling, okay? If you're on the inpatient world, if you're on the inpatient world, you're wondering what happened. This hospital has not had its third floor open for quite some time. Or if it does, it turns on for a day or two and then turns back off. So, I could sit here and I could say, "Well, don't worry about that because we're doing an outstanding job in the physician's office." When they're coming in, first of all, they have access, so they don't have to go through the ED and then they're not fighting some illness forever in their home before finally showing up to the doctor and by that time, they're too sick and so then they have to go to the hospital. They have access, they're able to come in. The doctors are appropriately managing chronic problems, chronic issues, and therefore keeps the patients from having to come in. So I could say that and I think that's a very safe thing to say. I think there's a lot of truth in that. However, if you're a nurse who typically works on the third floor, you don't care, all right? You've got bills to pay. You may be the breadwinner of your family. You got to buy groceries, you got to pay for a car, you got to pay for a house, you have all these things. Just because our hospital isn't full doesn't mean that your bills stopped coming. So what do you have to do? You got to look around. You got to find a way to get your hours. You got to find a way to get a full paycheck. Okay? So, I do say that there's high-quality patient care going on in our physician offices. But let's back up for a second. Because that might imply that what I'm saying is that there was low-quality care going on before, which is not true. There was not a huge jump in terms of what physicians were doing. There were some throughput and efficiency things that had to occur, there were just things that had to be put on their radar. Yes, it was weird for the orthopedic docs to have to ask a patient when their last colonoscopy was, right? I mean, that's just kind of bizarre. But the quality didn't change drastically. Our reporting of the quality did. Well, that kind of stinks, right? Because now I can't look at you all and say, "Well, there was this huge fundamental shift and that's what took away the inpatient volume." Right? So I just led you down a path and y'all were kind of buying it and now I just said, "That's not really true," right? When did the volume drop? Anybody know? Chief Financial Officer loves that, when the volume drops on the shortest month of the year. What did we do in February? Let me take you back a little bit. One, we had just come off of a pretty significant financial move for the hospital, cutting expenses and getting adjusted to sequestration. Well then, in January, we were able to finally go, "Hey, we hit our financial numbers and we can start looking at the operations of the hospital as a whole." We had not been able to really focus, put a maniacal focus on quality inpatient care up to that point because we were just trying to make sure that we stayed afloat, that we can continue the mission and vision of this hospital by keeping the doors open. January, we were able to step back, take a little bit of a breath and say, "What are we doing in terms of patient care? Where's the most glaring omission of good patient care?" Well, what I would argue was this, that up until, really February 1st, if a patient came into our emergency room with a neuro-related diagnosis, neuro-related, first of all, just getting them in the ED meant that we had to yell at the EMS trucks and get them to stop here because they knew that we didn't have a neurologist around. Then, when the patient did get here, we had to yell at the ED physicians to not transfer them, keep them. And then, we had to contact the hospitalists and yell at them and say, "You will take that admission." Even though they're saying, "I don't have a neurologist that's going to come over here and see this patient for one, two, three, four, five days, yet you're telling me that I got to keep the patient." Yes, because we got to keep this hospital full, we got to keep these volumes coming through here and what we noticed is if we start transferring, we keep transferring. We're really good at transferring. Okay? So here I was, the administrator, preaching quality, preaching patient care and demanding that from the caregivers, from the providers. Okay. So, January, finally, we're able to pay attention to the operations of the hospital in terms of the quality that we're providing. Had to ask myself, if my mother came in on a Thursday, I use Thursday for a reason, those who are understanding know why Thursday was the reason, but if my mom came in on Thursday, would I demand that the ambulance bring her here to Northcrest? Once she was here, demand that the ED physicians treat her and then demand that the hospitalist accept the admission and hold her here? And would I be okay knowing that I just parked my mother in my hospital and I know that no neurologist is going to see her until probably Tuesday? Right? No. I would have loaded my mom up in an ambulance and I would have said, "You take me to the nearest place," and I would know, "that has neuro coverage." Yet, I was forcing your mom to come here. So, in February, an email went out to all the ED physicians and all the hospitalists that said, "From this point forward, if a patient presents that is going to need neuro, a consult or any type of an observation from, from a neurologist, that patient's to be sent where we can get them 365 days a year, 24-hour-a-day neuro coverage." Unequivocally. Become a transfer center for neuro. All right, that sounds great. Man, you know, it sounds like, "Yes, we are doing the right things for the right reason. We are centered on patient care. We are doing the best for this community." And I walked 25 to 30 patients out of the door. On average, that's what we transfer out now. Beginning in February, 25 to 30 patients are being transferred out of this hospital to an accepting inpatient facility with an average length of stay of 3.5 days. It's over 100 patient days. Do you know what 100 patient days does? It fills up MS3. It guarantees nurses their hours. It makes sure that we are rock-solid from a financial performance and from a volume standpoint, but are we doing the right thing for the patient? So, I know that we shut down a floor because we're on neurodiversion. It's the right thing to do, however. Now I said, "It's the right thing to do for patient care," but I already said, "We got nurses that aren't getting a full paycheck, so they're leaving." So now you got high nursing turnover. Now, you need to recruit to fill your nurses that are turning over. The ones that just left ain't coming back. They know they can't get their hours. The new ones coming in, you get a choice. We going to lie to them? Of course we'll get your hours, we'll make sure that you get at least 32. No, you tell them the truth. Guess how hard it is to recruit nurses? Okay? So, what I'm not doing though, is throwing that out there and saying that we don't have a solution. September 4th, we are turning on the solution, which is tele-neurology. It's delivered through Vanderbilt Medical Center in partnership with them. It is a Vanderbilt neurologist who is credentialed into our organization, sitting back at Vandy, coming over an iPad to a charge nurse who's been trained to be able to work with that neurologist. They can talk to the patient, they can talk to the family, it's just like they were there except they can't touch the patient. They've come in, talked to all of our physicians, actually the neurologist will tell you, it's not really a whole lot that a neurologist does from a touch standpoint anyway. They want to look at some tests and so this is actually one of those services that kind of makes sense. So we're going to be able to begin holding September 4th, all these neuropatients that went away. The other hospitals, we're not the first that have gone live on this, so we're not a pioneer. It's gone live at Murray and at Sumner.
They do it in Clarksville.
They do it in Clarksville, okay. And so, this is not a unproven thing. The hospitals, I'm sorry, not Murray, Williamson. So at Williamson Medical Center, when they turned it on, they had also been on 100% neurotransfer. They began holding anywhere from 10 to 12 patients a week additional, right? So that fills up a floor pretty quickly. So, taking you on a roller coaster. So that's great, right? So now we hold 25 to 30 patients overnight, just like that. Guess what I don't have? Nurses. Okay. So, that's when we all look at Angie and go, "Hmm, your life gets hard." So she has to handle the decisions that I make, which again, it is a patient-centered, patient-focused decision. Would I put my mom in this hospital for that particular disease? No. However, we need them here to keep the volumes up, there's a good, safe way to do it. However, we need them here to keep the volumes up, there's a good, safe way to do it, high-quality way. However, it took us eight months to get it turned on. Now we're looking at, how are we going to handle this from a staffing standpoint? So she's got great plans in place, we've got a whole lot of recruitment efforts underway. That's why you saw some emails out there about, hey, recruit a friend, call them, let them know. It is still difficult to call the ones that left and say, hey, we've got this wonderful thing that we're going to turn on. It's not turned on yet, but it's going to be, and it's going to solve all of our problems. So there's going to be a little bit of a transition period to where we look at it and go, hey, we've got a heck of a lot of volume that we're trying to handle, and now let's get some of these nurses back in here. So it's a, it is the right thing to do, I think. We didn't need to be demanding those patients stayed here, but there is a ripple effect to these types of decisions, and then when you fix them, there's a ripple effect to those too. Okay? So that's where we are. I really just want to let you know that it's on our radar. We get it, it is not something that we're sweeping under the rug. We've got to get this hospital full, we are already throwing kind of a bigger net, meaning that we're going up into Clarksville, we're getting patients down, a lot of those primary care physicians are using us as a directed admit source, which is great. So these things are hitting. So we're starting to grow, getting these volumes, everything's starting to look good. I would rather have the problem of, how do we add more staff to handle the volumes than to be where we were in October, which is, how are we going to flex? How are we going to get down, our expenses down to the level of volumes that we're seeing? Okay? So that's where we're sitting from an inpatient standpoint, from teleneurology. Okay? So that's where we are, that's what we're doing here in the near term. So now let me talk to you about what we're going to do going forward. Value-based purchasing. We talked about it before. Every new hire that comes through here, I come in and talk to them all, and we talk about value-based purchasing. That in the old way, in the, when it first started, three years ago, four years ago, I'm dating myself now, five, I don't know how long ago it was now, 70% of your Medicare reimbursement bonus was based on core measures. Core measures, scientifically-proven, best-practiced ways to take care of certain disease states, pneumonia, heart attack, right? So, CHF skips. And you were graded on it, how well you did. 70% of your Medicare bonus was based on that. Now, they called it a bonus, but really what they did is they cut us, and then you had to earn it back. So we'll call it a bonus, but it's really just an earn-back of what they took. The other 30% was patient perception, the HCAP survey, which we've talked about, and I'll get back around to in a second. Okay? Tennessee Hospital Association, we're able to report to them. All hospitals in the state of Tennessee, except a few of the for-profits, report to THA. An agreement that we have with Tennessee Hospital Association is that we will all freely report, but we cannot use our rankings or the scores that THA provides from a marketing standpoint. So I can't take my THA data that comes back to me, that shows me how I compare to other hospitals, and actually put it on a billboard. That would get me in a lot of trouble. So what you see is that on the billboards, we put, we're a leapfrog A hospital, those are things that you can publicly put out there, the joint commission, that we've been in the top 30% for three years in a row, and we will be the fourth year coming up. You know, these are, these are things that you can put out there. I cannot put our THA data out there, but I can tell you. So let me tell you that the last month that just came out, we are, of the 76 hospitals that report in the state of Tennessee, we are still number one, and have been for quite some time. So we are the highest-performing hospital in the state of Tennessee in terms of core measures, how we treat patients in that quality way, that quality manner. We're in the top 1.4% in the nation in how we perform in that. So you don't necessarily have to say you're the best in the state. You can say you're the best, one of the best, in the nation, right? 1.4%. If you were scoring those kind of grades in school, you're genius level. Congratulations, you're all geniuses. So we do really, really well. Now, I have a conundrum. My dilemma is that we're looking at patient satisfaction scores, the bane of our existence, I think, trying to get above the 50th percentile, which is just right average. Patient perception, do they rank us, giving us a score of a nine, or a 10, or a five, depending on the scale, when they talk about our cleanliness, our quietness, our communication, how we do all these things, right? We're consistently in the middle. Of 86 hospitals that reported, we're always 43rd, right? But you want to talk about scientifically-proven best things, studies that have gone on. Studies have shown that your best indicator of employee satisfaction is customer satisfaction. So if I look at customer satisfaction, it looks like only half y'all are happy. But there's another study that shows that morale directly correlates to quality. But we're number one in quality. So don't we have the highest morale in the state? So how can I have the highest morale in the state but just average employee satisfaction? You can't. Now then, what do I know? What do I feel from that? I know that you all have a culture of quality. I know that even if you come dragging across the threshold of this door, not even wanting to be here, that you will not compromise your quality. Hey, we can build from that. If you tell me that no matter how bad of a day you're having, how horrible it is, you will not compromise on the level of care that you provide. Hey, that's, that's saying something. That shows your commitment. That shows that back when we began talking, back in October, and I said, I'm not going to demand your loyalty, I'm not going to demand high morale, but by God, we're going to be committed to what we're doing if you're sticking around. Y'all are committed. We are a community hospital dedicated to providing the best and highest level of patient care, and you do that day in and day out. Now then, let's talk about your satisfaction. We can talk about PDO buyback, which is, I hope, great. I hope it allows you to get some Christmas presents and do what you need to do so that you've got some spending cash. I hope that you took the increases that we're able to give this year at time of evaluations as being a positive, something that we're moving forward to. I hope that you understand that we are growing the cash reserves of this hospital to where we will be able to start the employee share program again in the upcoming years, which means that when you have a big positive bottom line, you can actually share it out, right? You need that big positive bottom line. So we can do all these things, but what I'm not looking for is trying to achieve the status of highly-paid disgruntled employees. Right? I mean, that's, woo, that really helps us out, right? So I think that what we've got right now is we've got commitment. I think we have loyalty, because you're here. Morale. I think you've got high quality, but I don't think that translates back to the morale and the patient, and the employee satisfaction. So, another thing that we did a while back, several years ago, we talked about flattening the organization. Why'd we do that? We did it because we were embracing a lean culture. And you can talk about lean a whole lot of different ways. I'm not worried about too many of them. What I like about a lean culture is it empowers you. We can go back into the decade, anybody watch the show Mad Men? It's a great show. But it's a command-and-control model. Command-and-control, it means that I went to school, I got my MBA, I'm a businessman, fully-trained, right? It means I know all your job better than you do, even though I've never done your job. Okay? That's right, yeah. Let me come back, I can run an analyzer like nobody's business, because I'm sure there's a book somewhere. Because that's all it is, too, it's just analyzer. So, no, right? No. What it means is, you're the only person that knows your job, you're the expert in your job. We need to get out of the way. We need to give you a voice. We need to make sure that you can tell us how to better do your job. So that's what we did when we embraced lean. That's how we flattened the organization. So my challenge to you all going forward is this. There's three things, three things, but I can tell my story to you. By the way, I'm going to take a brief aside. I don't know what y'all did over the Labor Day weekend. I discovered that there's no topsoil in Cross Plains, Tennessee, none. And so I attempted to sink four, four-by-fours, two feet in the ground, and concrete them in. I did two, and they're a foot and a half in the ground, and my hands don't work, so I tried to do three just then, but it, three, and the forearms hurt too, and I don't have a whole lot of skin left in my hands. So there are three things that I need from you all. Talked about them before, your commitment, your loyalty, and high morale. But I think that we've gotten everything out of the way, or at least we're working to get everything out of the way, so that you all can work with us to achieve those things. I need your voice. I need to make sure that you all have a direct communication to your leader, whoever that is, whether it be a coordinator, a charge nurse, a supervisor, a team lead, a director, a VP, or God help you who report directly to me, me. But you've got to sit there, and you've got to evaluate, what is it that is keeping you from being excited to step across that threshold? Now, first of all, it is a job. You do get paid, you ain't doing it for free. So I'm not saying that you're just running in here to do it, right? But, but you should have high morale. So I know that I need to be more visible, I know I need to round more, I need to talk to you all more. You should expect that from your supervisors as well. You should also expect, y'all remember the stoplight reports? You might have been here long enough to, BLI, right? Stoplight reports. And what they were was, it was rounding, and so you walked around, you talked to everybody, and you did your stoplight reports. Every communication board had, here are the issues that you reported, here's what we can do, here's what we can't do, and here's why. And it was transparent. And you knew that your suggestions and your comments had been heard. This is your hospital, you've shown it. You've rallied around, and you've come through heckin' back, and you did not let quality slide. You are maniacally focused on patient care. It's your hospital. So I need you all's help to demand a voice. Get the information to us as to how we can do better, what we can do to improve the morale and improve the employee satisfaction. I don't want a big, long list that all they say is more pay, more pay, and more pay. Okay? I got you. All right? As we get more money, you'll get more pay. But volumes, volumes come into that, okay? So that's what I want you to do. You've got to demand it. You have to demand it. It is okay, when I'm walking around, for you to say, haven't seen you in a little while. That's okay. First of all, it lets me know that you actually want to see me, right? But also, it helps jog my memory, too. It helps me to know, you know what, you're right. Why haven't I been back to this area? Earlier today, there was a whole group for medical imaging, CT scan, right? It just seems like I hit that workroom, I turn left, I see the radiologist, and I never get 10 feet further to the back. But you know what I did the other day, and I got caught? Got caught. Chastised, you know? Why haven't you been back here? Hear your voice, but you don't ever come back here. We've got patients, we can't come out and see you. You know? It's okay. It is okay that you talk to your supervisor and say, I haven't seen you. It is okay that you demand to be heard. And it is okay that you follow up, because we sure follow up with you. High levels of accountability are a 360-degree thing. We hold you accountable, you hold us accountable. It's okay. All right? So with that said, that's where I need your help. That's the last hurdle right now that we've got to get through for the future. So that's my challenge to you. Okay? Try and leave you alone every time.